Our responsibility as the county's auditors is ultimately to issue an opinion on the financial statements and whether we believe those to be accurately stated in all material respects. So as part of the audit, of course, we do tests of transactions during the year, at the end of the year as well, in order to be able to issue those opinions. We also look at, you know, the system of internal controls. We look at due to federal funding that was received. We look at compliance with federal funding in that related spending. And if we would identify any matters deficiencies related to the audit, we would have to share those as part of our audit results as well. I am pleased to note there were no material compliance issues. There were no material findings that we noted as part of the audit this year. So hopefully that is a very positive takeaway from my comments this morning. As far as the opinion goes, we issued what is called an unmodified or clean audit opinion. Yes, we believe the financial statements to be accurately stated in all material respects. That's the highest opinion, the best opinion that we can give as part of the audit process. Within the financial reports, there are just a couple of sections that I wanted to bring to your attention. There's no need to really follow along, but I'll just really share a couple of pieces of information within those. Early on in the financial statements, starting on page nine, and it goes just a handful of pages, is a document called a transmittal letter. Always will encourage a board to review this information. It provides a good high-level summary of results for the year. It's a lot of narrative information, so it's not just page after page of numbers, but it talks more about the accomplishments, what was done with the use of the funds during the year, so I think is a good, you know, way to just reflect on that activity. There's also a section in there on awards and acknowledgements. The county has continued to apply for and receive a certificate for excellence in financial reporting. That's sort of the gold standard for governmental financial statement reporting, and the county has consistently applied for and received that award. There's also early on in the report, starting on page 26, a section called the management's discussion and analysis. You know, the financial statements seem to grow by a handful of pages every year. I think there are 247 pages this year. It's obviously a lot of information. So what the management's discussion and analysis does is just sort of breaks that down into some more condensed, high-level format, and again, provides some more narrative information on the financial results for the year. There are some charts and graphs included in that section. It's also got a lot of good budgetary and other type of information. So from a financial perspective, financial results, just a handful of pages, I always encourage a board to spend a few minutes with. And then lastly, I wanted to just briefly mention the operating results for the general fund for the year, which is on page 44 of the financial statements. Page 44 is called a statement of revenues, expenditures, and changes in fund balance. And there's a column there for the general fund, which shows an increase in fund balance for the year of $5,538,099, bringing the end-of-year total fund balance to $113,805,072. Later on in the report, there's also a lot of information on the general fund's budget, the original and final budget. If you're interested in that information, you'll find that on page 128. Those were the brief highlights I wanted to share with this group, and if there's questions or areas you'd like a little bit more information on, I would be happy to provide.
Thank you, Paul. Any questions from commissioners? Comments? Commissioner Boujack.
Thank you, Chair. Really appreciate the amount of work that has gone into this. This is the third report that I've seen. It's always very intensely reviewed and I'm glad to see that in your finding there was no fraud and no abuse. So I think that's an important topic in today's political world. Everybody's looking for those kinds of things, and to see that none was found in your audit is very comforting, and I think the citizens of Kent County should be proud of this board and the financial resources that we have with our administrators, who have been very carefully watching over the funds of the county and assuring that there is no fraud and abuse. So that was very comforting, seeing a healthy fund balance and then getting your final report and saying that we still are managing or maintaining our AAA bond rating. Very, very good, and I appreciate all you're doing to help us out.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Thank you, Commissioner. Others? You guys are gonna let Paul off easy today. All right, I don't see anyone. Paul, I appreciate the work that you and the team put in. Jeff, kudos on another clean audit for the county staff, and thank you for taking the time to be with us this morning.
Thank you all.
All right, with that, we will move on to agenda item number six, which is public comment related only to the agenda items. If you wish to give public comment, please come forward, give your name and address, and you have three minutes. Welcome, Dee Jones.
Dee Jones. Nine, six, seven, Temerack Avenue. That's where I stay at. I'm Dee Jones, passionate entrepreneur and visionary. As you guys see, I got this hat from the United Nations. It is so nice and beautiful. It was cool to go to the United Nations. I'm speaking on the grants, contracts, and donations policy, which is item agenda G. So I'm a partner with you guys in a couple different things. First of all, I would like to say on the fiscals and the accounting, it's good to see that our county is doing good fiscally, but I think you guys could do better because the Republicans control the agenda and the budget, and I'd like to see bipartisanship on actually having a good budget that actually reflects the benefits and the things that the community would like to see, and not just the Republicans and just pushing the agenda, as I spoke out about Donald Trump's federal policies that's affected everyone here in Kent County and across the globe and across the United Nations. I believe you guys should be bipartisan, working together, and giving Dee Jones funding, contracting with Dee Jones, and donating stuff to Dee Jones, so Dee Jones can help improve the city, because I already had a $32 billion company on ABC 13, Epic Games, educate students in the public school systems, and we know the billionaires don't support public schools like that, but it's a $32 billion company that educated them, that aligns with the United Nations' goals of sustainability. Seventeen goals, and I spoke at the United Nations about Donald Trump, too. I believe in karma and groundbreaking. I was at the groundbreaking, so I had to give one to my friend in the hood, too, and he was super happy. He felt elegant and rich, and I would love that same thing for the community. I believe the divestitures should be given, Dee Jones and you guys, the West Michigan Policy Forum, the divestitures, Van Nando, Grand Action 2.0, should have policies that reflect the best of the best for the community, bipartisanly. I believe they should have Democrats at the table and independents and independent thinkers, and Dee Jones should be advising, too, because I've done things. I already have Epic Games giving another educational session, the design, the summer program for the city of GR, August 1st. They're already going to be educating the students again. I'm not gonna stop. I'm gonna be relentless, fearlessly relentless, but not reckless, because I love good trouble. I'm all for the good trouble. I'm all for the good trouble. I know this is better than what anybody can do. I know it. It's better than what the divestitures can do, as I spoke to them about FIFA E and brought that electric green controller that Ben Green spoke about, because I didn't know it was an electric green controller. I just knew it was an Xbox controller, and that the students at the youth justice influencely use that controller, and the other people around the hood, in the trenches and everywhere else, from different backgrounds and ethnicities, ethically be able to have access to esports and gaming competitions. And so I brought that controller there, because the chair said that he educated me, and I was like, you know what? I like Ben Green, and hopefully the stuff that I'm doing can influence people, as I already know I'm influencing you. I'm gonna be a global leader. Hopefully Kent County does this, because it's gonna reflect your character, not mine. Thank you.
Thank you, Dee. Is there anybody else for public comment this morning, related to agenda items only? I see none. So with that, we will move on to agenda item number seven, which is the consent agenda, and I will call on Commissioner Steck.
Thank you, Chair Green. I move approval of today's consent agenda.
Is there support? Supported by Commissioner Teal. Any discussion? Seeing none. This is a roll call vote. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On the motion to adopt the consent agenda, Commissioners Womack.
Yes.
Teal. Steck. Sparks. Ponstein.
Yes.
Pakla. Oliver King. Morse. Morales.
Yes.
Merchant. McLeod.
Yes.
Legrand.
Callman.
Hildenbrand. Hennessy. Holstead. Faber. DeBoer. Vice Chair Burrow.
Yes.
Commissioner Boujack. Chair Green.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, you have 20 yeses, zero nays. The motion passes. The consent agenda is adopted.
Thank you. We'll move on to agenda item number eight, which is resolutions. And for item 8A, I will call on Commissioner Oliver King.
You have me for the next four.
I know, you're busy this morning.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair. I move that resolution 21 of today's date. Nurse's Family Partnership Program Personnel Request Brought to Us by the Health Department to be Adopted.
Thank you. Is there support? Supported by Commissioner Pakla. Is there any discussion or questions on this item? Okay, seeing none. This is a voice vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you. Move on to 8B, and I will again call on Commissioner Oliver King.
Again, it's me. I move that resolution 22 of today's date. Michigan Department of Natural Resources Urban and Forestry Inflation Reduction Grant to be adopted, brought to us by the Parks Department.
Is there support?
Support.
I think that was Commissioner Morales? Yes. Okay. Any questions, comments, discussion on this item? Yes, Commissioner Pakla.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think this question is for admin. Is this, knowing that this is a grant that's passed through from the Inflation Reduction Act, and knowing federally what's happening with the Inflation Reduction Act, do we know, are these dollars that are cash in hand, or are we expecting reimbursement for this in a way that could be in question?
We do. We'll call up our capable Parks Director, Ben Swayze.
Great, thank you for the question. So that's something we have been following closely. In fact, this grant was originally awarded by the DNR back in late 2024 and was paused at a point because they were concerned about the funding as well. So they have restarted the process. They had told us that the reimbursements are happening now, but it is a reimbursement grant. So myself and Jesse will work very closely to make sure that as we are spending these funds, we are applying for the reimbursements right away, instead of accumulating them and waiting until the end.
Great. And as a follow-up, do you have an idea of how quickly those reimbursements come in, in a way that alerts you if there's a problem with them, right? I mean, is this every month we send them in, every two weeks, as the expenditures happen?
I don't know. Jesse, do you?
Sounds like quarterly.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Thank you, Ben. Seeing none, this is again a voice vote. All those in favor, please say aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Move on to agenda 8C, and I'll again call on Commissioner Oliver King, third out of four. Well, for now, yeah.
Thank you, Chair. I move that resolution 23 of today's date. KCCA Water Affordability Grant to be adopted, brought to us by the Community Action.
Is there support? Supported by Commissioner Legrand. Is there questions, comments, or discussion? Okay, I see none. This is again a voice vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Resolution is adopted. Okay, for the last in this stretch, we'll call again on Commissioner Oliver King for 8D.
Thank you, Chair. I move that resolution 24 of today's date. Grand River Greenway Grant from Downtown Grand Rapids, Inc. for Johnson Park Improvement, brought to us by the Parks Department, be adopted.
Is there support? Commissioner Boujack. Questions, comments, or discussion on this item? Yes, Commissioner Pakla.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I couldn't quite tell from the action request, and I wasn't able to attend the finance, but is this an extra appropriation because of cost overruns or because of an expansion of scope, because additional funds were available?
You can come up and help address this one, but this money comes from the 55 million that was granted to DGRI, and so far Kent County has been able to work with DGRI to secure about 20 million of those funds to do Greenway work and some of the parks that tie into the Greenway. And so that's more of the big picture. I believe, yeah, go ahead.
Yep, to answer the specific question, this is additional scope. So originally, when we received the money from DGRI, this project was not included, and they didn't appropriate all the funds at the beginning. So Josh and Sam from the Parks Foundation and ALLOY were to work with DGRI and have this additional appropriation, which increases the scope of the project.
Great, that's fantastic. Thank you.
Thank you. Any others on 8D? Oh, yes, Commissioner Hildebrand.
Just, Ben, on the Greenway project, I heard out in my neck of the woods some updates on connecting the Greenway to the riverfront park, the township riverfront park, and potentially expanding the bridge over the Grand River to allow for pedestrian. Is that happening, or what's kind of that?
Yeah.
Update on that real quick.
Yep, so we had a great meeting, myself, a couple representatives from LARA and the Road Commission, so you're correct. The LARA, the Lowell Area Recreation Authority, currently has all the funding, and this fall we'll be building a section of the Greenway from the North Riverfront Park to the Lowell Recreation Park, which used to be the Kent Youth Fairgrounds, which is great, because that's part of the project that we don't have to fund. Glad that's working. And they also have additional M.DOP-TAP funding for that remaining portion, basically getting from the Lowell Recreation Park to the edge of the Grand River Valley Rail Trail at the border. So we're partnering to begin an engineering project to look at that pedestrian bridge back over the Grand River, as well as that final section of trail. Another part of that project is that there are some areas of abandoned rail, not only east-west, but also north-south, getting down to the youth fairgrounds underneath the expressway, and then a little bit further south. And we have partnered with the DNR to apply for a DNR trust fund grant this year to acquire those properties, which will not only help move the Greenway along, but will make that north-south connection from the Greenway down to the Kent County Youth Fairgrounds.
Anybody else? Yes, Commissioner Steck.
Thank you, Chair Green. I was thinking that this project at Johnson Park was always contemplated as part of our future. Have we changed the funding source for this, or is it slightly tweaked? Just to follow up on Commissioner Pakla.
Yeah, yep, so essentially, the project has always been visioned the way it is, but through a couple multiple phases. So we did complete phase one back in 2023, which was the expansion of the parking lot, but was always anticipated to create a four-season restroom. You know, there is a lot of sledding that happens at the park, whether or not we promote that or not, it happens there. But we're seeing a demand for four-season use for all of our parks. So developing a four-season restroom, replacement of the playground, creating some additional gathering spaces, and then the adaptive mountain bike trails have always been a big part of that project, but the funding always wasn't lined up. So we've been fortunate enough to, the county, the Board of Commissioners appropriated some ARPA funds to that. We were able to get the additional funds from DGRI, and then if the state ever makes their appropriations, we do have a DNR trust fund grant to fill the rest of that gap as well.
So this is primarily a funding shift, and?
Correct.
Thank you.
All right. Anybody else? Okay, thanks again, Ben. All right, this is again a voice vote. All those in favor of adopting the resolution, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. The resolution is adopted. Move on to agenda item 8E, and I will call on Commissioner McLeod in Commissioner Sparks' absence.
Thank you, Chair. I move resolution 25 of today's date. Older Americans Act Outreach and Assistance by 25 Grant Coming to Us From the Community Action.
Is there support?
Support.
Supported by Commissioner Legrand. Questions, comments, or discussion? Okay, seeing none. This is again a voice vote. Lisa, you had a pretty slow day today. All those in favor of adopting the resolution, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries, and the resolution is adopted.
Of course, of course, this only happens when I have my voice.
Of course. Even though you don't have your voice, that doesn't mean you have nothing to say, right? All right, we will move on to agenda item 8F, and I will again call on Minority Vice Chair McLeod.
Thank you, Chair. Move resolution 26 of today's date. Consumers Energy Assessment on 2228 Butterworth Street, Southwest, coming to us from the facilities.
Is there support? Supported by Commissioner Womack. Questions, comments, or discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor of adopting resolution 8F, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries, and the resolution is adopted. Thank you. We will now move on to agenda item 8G, and I will call on Commissioner Callman.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I move resolution 27, Updates to the Grants, Contracts, and Donations Policy for Fiscal Services.
Is there support? Supported by Commissioner Pakla. Questions, comments, or discussions? I'm wondering if with these policy changes, we might get a quick?
Sure.
Review, for those of us that didn't serve on operations.
Yes, there really isn't much substantive with these three. The main purpose of today's action is to fit the policies to the three-committee system. I was being a little frustrated that we're off to a little bit of a slow start with some agenda items on committees this year, but part of it is we need to retrofit our policies to fit with the three- our policies to fit with the three different committees. That's the primary purpose of these three. There's a couple of language clarifications, but really no substantive changes.
Okay, great. Are there questions, comments, or discussions on this first policy? Okay. Seeing none, again a voice vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. And the motion carries, the resolution is adopted. Move on to Agenda Item 8H, and I will again call on Commissioner Coleman.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I move Resolution 28, Updates to the Capital Improvement Program Policy from Fiscal Services.
Is there support?
Support.
Supported by Commissioner Pakla. It was a tie, I think. Questions, comments, or discussion on this one? Yes, Commissioner Faber.
Yeah, just for those that weren't able to tune into the discussion in the Policy Committee, something that Commissioner Coleman and I came up or addressed was whether the $25,000 limit for CIP was still the appropriate number or whether that should be adjusted upward. If this policy had not been updated since 1996, that $25,000 number would be $51,600 adjusted for inflation. So, maybe just looking at that, I think the response we got was that it may have to do with auditing and a number that they set, but something that I think we should look at, especially if it makes us more efficient.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, I don't see anyone. All those in favor of adopting the resolution, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries, the resolution is adopted. Move to Agenda Item 8I, and I will again call on Commissioner Coleman.
Mr. Chairman, I move Resolution 29, Updates to the Annual Budget Policy from Fiscal Services.
Thank you, is there support? Supported by Commissioner Pakla. Questions, comments, or discussion? Yes, Minority Vice Chair McLeod.
Thank you, Chair. I just had a question on item, the removal of item 4C on this policy and just wanted to understand why that particular part was removed in terms of year-end budget transfers.
Ask Jeff Dode to come up for that one.
I believe that's talking about the transfers to strategic capital. I forgot to bring the policy with me. I apologize. I believe it was because after we talked with our auditors, it's against state law to make budget amendments after fiscal year-end. So, that was in violation of state law, so they had us remove that.
Thank you.
Corporate counsel is concurring with Jeff on that, so thank you. Other questions, comments, or discussion? All right, seeing none. All those in favor of adopting the resolution, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries and the resolution is adopted. We will move on to Agenda Item 8J, and I will call on Commissioner Merchant. Take your time.
Resolution, what is it? 8J, today's date, appointments to various boards, commissions, and committees.
Is there support?
Support.
Supported by Vice Chair Burrell. Questions, comments, or discussion on the appointments? Commissioner Pakla.
Thank you, Chair. I just wanted to say that we had some discussion yesterday in our Standing Rules Committee about making sure that language in the Standing Rules was very clear, and there was some conversation around this particular agenda item at the CHAS meeting on Tuesday. So, we did have some robust discussion yesterday to make sure that all of our Standing Rules language is clearly articulating whose responsibility this work is. So, I appreciate the ongoing conversation.
Thank you. We're also working to clean up some of the language surrounding, just understanding better the process for appointments to various boards, commissions, committees, the chair's authority and lack thereof and that sort of thing. So, hopefully, it'll be a lot cleaner in the document that we get. Commissioner Hennessy.
Thank you. It was left out of the discussion the other day, and I just want to express my appreciation for the people who have come forward and put their names forward to apply for these positions, to work on behalf of Kent County and all of its residents. And these are very good people who are being recommended. I think that got lost in the other portions of the discussion the other day, but these are very good people and I'm pleased that they're here to serve us.
Thank you. Agreed. Commissioner Womack.
Yes, I just want to thank Commissioner Hennessy for her attention to the zoo, which is located in her district and serving the entire county. After reading the agenda, having a few questions about the zoo millage and some of the appointments, I had a chance to briefly ask her advice and I always think highly of your advice when it comes to the zoo and things in your district. So, thank you for your work making my work easier.
Thank you, Commissioner. Is there anyone else? Okay, we do have Commissioner DeBoer will be abstaining from the vote due to a conflict that she discussed with corporate counsel ahead of the meeting. All right, with that, this is a voice vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Motion carries, thank you. This is a lot of repetition. I don't know how you did this, Stack, with this long agendas here. Okay, we'll move on to Agenda Item 8K, and I will call on Vice Chair Burrell.
Thank you, Chair Green. I'd like to move Resolution 31 of today's date, 2025 Equalization Report, brought to us by Equalization.
Is there support? Supported by Commissioner Coleman, and Al wanted to say a few words to set this one up.
Yes, I did want to make a few comments about process. This did not go through committee and this is a good way to discuss the equalization role in this case in the apportionment report, which you approve each fall, is that they're the face of 35 units of government and they don't always get the information all at the same time. And so, there, it's a busy time for them to make sure all the numbers fit to bring you a report. So, why not just put it off till later in May? Because it has to be done by May 1st or no unit that levies taxes in the county would be allowed to levy taxes without an act of the Michigan Legislature. So, that's, that's why it's really important to get this done by May 1st. And so, I just wanted to comment on process and why it is the way it is this year.
Thank you, Al. Commissioner Stack.
Thank you. I just want to pass on the commiseration that I think if we approve this, you have 35 signatures that you have to affix in short term.
Tremendous. Thank you. Anybody else? And the clerk has him right there. This is great. Okay, anyone else? Okay, seeing none. All those in favor of adopting the equalization report, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries and the report is adopted. We'll move on to Agenda Item Number 9, which is public comment related to general county matters.
Welcome back.
Oh, the confidence of Jones. How y'all doing? I'm Dee Jones, I stay at 967 Temerac. Somebody calling me. It's probably the people from Saudi that invited me to the Saudi Business Forum on May 5th as they're looking for people to expand business ties between the Saudi government and the United States of America. Donald Trump could never do business like Dee Jones. Dee Jones is definitely a better CEO of America than Donald Trump could ever be. I was also, I finished my first course of getting a professional certification on game design from Epic Games. I gave you guys this flyers. This is actually open to all Kent County kids now. Every single Kent County kid that is nine and up, actually 10 and up. So, we're going to be playing NBA 2K and Fortnite, and we already have Epic Games, 32 billion-dollar company that's going to get richer. Funny thing, so you see this nice font with my company Jump Ahead? As I was there at the United Nations, I stopped at Rockstar Games Headquarters. That's the company that made Grand Theft Auto. Their game is a $2 billion game. They spent $2 billion to develop Grand Theft Auto 6. It ain't out yet, and they're creating a data center. I know that it's a large company that's actually trying to develop a data center around here, and they just bought a company named Activision Blizzard, which is like a $69 billion company, and I also have connections to the head of global communication from that. So, yeah, it's going to be super fire, the summer program. We're going to be actually educating our students across Kent County on streaming and content creation and shoutcasting, using the Play Esports app. I am Vice President of the Play Esports app. We have our vegan-free gummies, the Super Bear Gummies. They should put some Cartiers on there in the future because it's based in Detroit and that's going to be super fly. We have our cryptocurrency because I got invited to the Forbes Icon List with Larry Fink. Yeah, I already, I can, I'm going to bring that one next one. Larry Fink, 11 trillion in capital. I got invited to the Forbes Icon List. I want to see everybody go apply and see if y'all get invited to that. Yes, Dee Jones got accepted into that to go speak to Larry Fink, but they won 3,000 just to get into the, man, it's crazy. I ain't got 3,000 right now. But, it's going to be super cool and I'm not going to stop. I'm not going to stop. This is better than what the DeVos, Van Nandos, any of the billionaires that y'all listen to that controls anything. It's better than what they can offer and I offered them advice on having FIFA E, having FIFA competitions ethically, just inequitably for everyone, accessible to everyone regardless of ethnicity, because you want all of these Africans and these Hispanic people in your soccer stadium going crazy and yelling and stuff, but are you going to give them actual equal equitable access and opportunity? We gonna see, because I am. I can't speak for y'all, but I can speak for what Dee Jones is going to do, what Dee Jones already have. I can't see my time. But, I'm letting y'all know, no, I'm not going to stop. I'm not going to stop. I'm not going to stop. I spoke at that event right here at the Calder Plaza and told the Democrats, let's go, because we going to get the bad politicians out of office, whether you're Republican or a Democrat. You're going to go, and I'm not going to stop billions and trillions, trillions, trillions.
Thank you.
I'm not going to stop.
All right, we will move on to, oh, I'm sorry, is there anybody else for public comment today? My apologies. Okay, seeing none. We'll move on to Agenda Item Number 10, which is the Administrator's Report. Al, do you have anything for us today?
Just a couple items. Just wanted to remember, remind the board that on May 22nd, we'll have our next budget workshop to go over kind of the list of requests by department and get, answer questions and input, much like we did with the CIP requests. And then, I just wanted to add my thanks and congratulations to fiscal, to Jeff, Stephen, and the team. You know, we take this for granted and we should because we have high expectations of our financial performance in Kent County for decades now. When you look at the small number of counties that have a AAA credit rating in the state and the nation, it truly is remarkable that we're able to sustain this over such a long amount of time. And that's really because of the quality of the governance of the county through the board and the quality of the management of the board through the administration. And so, Jeff and team, thank you. Really appreciate it. And that's it for today.
Okay, thank you, Al. We will move on to Agenda Item Number 11, reports. We have a couple on here and then we'll open it up for others if necessary. First, 11A, Chair Appointments to the Mobility Task Force. We are reappointing the entirety of the Mobility Task Force to continue to serve in their seats. That's just an inform. Do not need approval of the Board of Commissioners to do that. Under Item 8B, or I'm sorry, 8, I got stuck on 8 for about an hour there. So, 11B, Chair Appointments to Zoo Museum Millage Review Subcommittee. I am establishing a subcommittee to look at the reviewing the millage for the zoo and museum. We're doing this a little bit proactively. Typically, we wait until we get a formal request from the requesting agencies to do that, but we know that this is going to be a critical question for the board to consider. So, we're appointing the committee as we can start that work and wait for the formal request to come in from the Zoo Museum Committee. So, I will be appointing myself, Vice Chair Burrell, Finance Chair Thiel, Minority Vice Chair McLeod, and Commissioner Faber to that subcommittee. And I do need support from the board to establish that, so I'd like to, a motion would be in order to create the Millage Review Subcommittee and make the appointments as presented. We got it. I had Pearl ready to do it and you beat him out, Lisa, so you got a lot of practice today. It's, it's moved by Commissioner Oliver King and supported by Commissioner Burrell. Is there any questions or comments or discussions on this? Okay, seeing none. Is this a voice vote? Corporate counsel? Okay, thank you. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries and the, it is adopted. We'll create the subcommittee. Thank you. Anybody else have reports this morning? Yes, Commissioner Womack.
Thank you, Chair Green. Serving on the Kent County Community Action Board, where our Vice Chair is our Commissioner Morales, thanking her for all the work she does with that. Just want to thank the county and everybody that has supported the Water Affordability Grant. Also, want to acknowledge the President of Mr. Perez, who's a part of that, one of our directors there, and that's really going to help a lot of people, especially in my community. And I'm glad it's county-wide because the needs for these water services and the restoration of water services and wastewater services extends throughout the county. So, just happy people are supporting that. And my report is that they just went through an audit and successfully passed their audit also.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner. Others for reports? Yes, Commissioner Stack.
Thank you, Chair Green. So, it is probably no surprise that these are challenging times in the world of Medicaid and particularly in the world of behavioral health Medicaid. And those of us that serve on the Board of Network 180, Commissioner Legrand, Commissioner Halsted, Commissioner Faber, we have met recently and did another amendment to our budget, which addresses as best we can what we're seeing at the federal level, what we're seeing in reverberations at the state level. It is likely that we will function this year, this fiscal year, with about a $13 million deficit, which will be covered by the LRE, we pray and hope. And that, though, is probably the end of what we can see in operating in the black. So, I think this year will be fine, next year will be twice as challenging, so stay tuned.
Thank you. Appreciate all of you for continuing to work on that and serving there. Others, yes, Commissioner Morse.
Thank you, Chair. I would just like to remind the board that we have an upcoming tour on May 8th. It's an agribusiness tour and we will be touring several different locations in Northwest Kent County, and I'd invite you to join us. It's going to be a very educational opportunity to see some of the behind the scenes in Kent County, agribusiness.
Excellent. Thank you, Commissioner. I'll plan to be there. Others for reports? Okay, seeing none. We'll move on to Item 12, which is miscellaneous. Does any commissioners have miscellaneous items today? Commissioner Boujack.
Thank you, Chair. Just wanted to thank Commissioner Stack on his invocation this morning and providing clarity regarding the invocation and its appropriateness and the need to continue to practice here at Kent County. I certainly support those statements that were made by Commissioner Stack. I also wanted to ask a question about the ACFR report that was presented. Is that going to be online for citizens to review? Is that up now?
I don't know if it's up now, but I know that you all go up. The prior years ones are on there. I don't know if the current is up yet or if it was waiting for today, but yeah.
So, there have been citizens that, you know, have asked to be able to access that, and it is a good read for those who have plenty of time to put into that. And then, finally, I'd like to welcome Taylor Port. Oh, Taylor, great. I didn't get a chance to meet you yet, Taylor, new part of our administrative team, and welcome aboard, Taylor.
Thank you.
Stole my thunder. Welcome, Taylor. Others, oh, I'm sorry, we had a couple. Commissioner Ponstein and then Pakla.
Thank you, Chair Green. So, I just want to start out, I said, over the past few weeks, I've gotten some interesting calls from people and, you know, when people call their commissioner with an issue, a lot of times, it's a learning situation for both of them. But, when we get a call, you know, it's not myself that's coming up with a solution. I want to thank staff. I think a lot of them know who I've called in the past couple of weeks on some very interesting issues. But, you know, I try to, like the last one I got, I had a lady pretty much crying that she had this issue, didn't know where to go and somehow, if I'm a commissioner, I'm going to be able to get a solution. You know, I don't have a magic wand, but I think what commissioners do have is that we know how to navigate the system and navigation of the system is getting harder and harder[1781.72] and harder, the bigger we get, and the scope of what county government does. So I appreciate everyone. I appreciate the calls from the people, and I encourage you to, to reach out, because that's probably our number one thing, not sitting here on a Thursday, but making sure the constituents of the county know when and where and what to do if a problem does come up. I also want to reach out, well, not reach out, I'll be at the City Hall in Granville tomorrow for Arbor Day. Want to thank Chair Green and the staff that got the proclamation ready on a, on a short notice. The city of Granville has got a renewal of their Tree City USA designation, and I know a lot of cities and villages have that too, but just wanted to recognize that. Third thing is, you know, we talk a lot about soccer stadiums, amphitheaters, and all the great things that are big in this community. I want to give a little shout out, because I've got a young, a young lady that I met during my time at Costco, that is one of the roles of the Civic Theater production of The Color Purple. It's a community-based gem that I think often is overlooked. The Color Purple is now playing through May 4th, and I encourage everyone to go see this. And then just in closing, you know, these are always difficult, so I just want to recognize Randy Cracker, longtime city attorney for the city of Granville, 47 years. He passed away this week. I just want to say that I am forever grateful for his friendship and his faithful service to the city of Granville, along with his wise counsel. And just my prayers go out to his wife Kathy and his whole family. So thank you.
Thank you Commissioner. Commissioner Pakla.
Thank you Mr. Chair. I wanted to remind everybody that we have an amazing resource in our community in the SafeChem drop-off sites that we have, and speak very briefly about how valuable they are. Yesterday at the SafeChem site, there was a Civil War era cannonball that was dropped off, and it was determined after an initial analysis to still be live. So the DPW administrative offices and a 300-foot safety barrier were all evacuated, and the GRPD bomb squad was called in to evaluate it, where it has now been removed, will be x-rayed, and will be restored, because it is in fact a collector's item. So hopefully, no one will hear this and think I should go drop off a Civil War era cannonball at SafeChem, but if you do, you know that it will be safely disposed of. Thank you.
We've instructed Commissioner Boujack to bring those elsewhere in the future. I also want to say just another moment of levity that we were in a meeting yesterday and heard an update on that, and somebody said that there was an ordinance, ordinance dropped off, and it could be explosive, and Al said, an ordinance. And I said, like, you know, a policy, and it's like, no, the ordinance is not it. It's a very, only government people could get that one screwed up. Me, myself included. Okay, anybody else for miscellaneous? Yes, Commissioner Stack, then Coleman.
Yeah, thank you Chair Green. I just want to join Commissioner Ponstein in acknowledging the life and the contribution of Randy Cracker, not just the city of Granville, where he's served for many, many years, but really throughout West Michigan. He's been a voice for justice, and he will be sorely missed.
Thank you. We'll do Commissioner Coleman, then Morales.
Thank you Mr. Chair. I always appreciate the energy that Dee Jones brings and his public comments to us on this board, and his, his sense of taking action in the community. I just really, really appreciate that. And to his comment today, just wanting to ensure, you know, that bipartisanship was happening, you know, here at Kent County. Having, having gone through 10 votes on Kent County budgets, 10 out of 10 have been with significant bipartisan support. So I just wanted to communicate that to him and the rest of the public, that to put it in esports terms, Kent County is on the top of the leaderboard when it comes to bipartisanship.
Thank you Commissioner. Commissioner Morales.
Thank you Chair. I would just like to wish a happy Earth Day to everybody. That was just the past Tuesday, and in honor of that, there's a lot of efforts being hosted across the city to clean up different neighborhoods. If you go to westgran.org, there's actually 16 different neighborhoods that are going to be cleaning up, and we could always use more volunteers to, you know, keep our neighborhoods clean. So we'd just like to invite you all to get involved in pitching with your neighbors. Thank you.
Commissioner, and we appreciate everybody working on those conservation efforts. Okay, anyone else for miscellaneous? Okay, I don't see any. I would just like to briefly recognize at the meeting the passing of Pope Francis, and just say that we send our condolences to the Catholics and Christians around the world that are mourning that passing, and hopeful for the, the future of the Church, and grateful for his leadership. So thank you. All right, with that, we will move on to Agenda Item Number 13, and I will call on Commissioner Stack.
Thank you Chair. I was reminded before we started that no one goes home until I speak.
Somebody else can move it, you know.
I think once you've called on me, that's not so. But anyway, I do move for adjournment, subject to the call of the Chair, to Thursday, May 8, 2025, at 8:30 AM.
Thank you. Is there support? Supported by Burl. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye, opposed, same sign. The motion carries. We are adjourned. Thank you.